And share it to YouTube. This is Morgan.
This has its speakers. Hello?
We can hear you, Joe.
Can you hear me, Morgan?
She's on mute. I can hear you, Joe.
I can hear you, Joe.
This looks more ordinary.
I can hear you too, and Joe.
We should be live on YouTube now. So.
Only through your computer, through your phone.
You still can't hear me, Joe?
I'm on the phone with them.
But everybody else can hear me just fine?
So it's something to do with Joe's speakers, yes?
Okay. Joe, can you hear everybody else, or?
No, he cannot. We can hear him, he can't hear us.
Okay.
And I guess we'll just use Joe's flag for that. Mayor, okay.
Maybe I'll get out and get back in. If you have to move on without me, go ahead. This is weird. I've never had a problem with Zoom before.
I can hear you, Joe. You can't hear us?
I'm just gonna get out and get back in, Matt.
We don't have Jan, do we?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, we're getting close. Joe, can you hear us?
Are you muted?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you're good. How about Joe?
He's.
He's still working it, huh? Okay. It is now 5:30. I think there's a couple more people that need to come on, but we do need to get started. So with that, want to welcome you. Obviously, I think we're, looks like everybody's pretty healthy. That's, that's great. I don't see Jan on yet, but I, oh, there she just come on. That's perfect. Okay, let me just go ahead and do a roll call real quick. This is Roy City Council meeting June 16th. At 5:30, we have Councilmember Saxton on the line. Councilmember Burrell, good to see you, Jan. Councilmember Jackson on the line. Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Paul. So we have a full council. That's exciting. We've asked Councilmember Wilson if she'll lead us in a moment of silence on a pledge of allegiance. And guaranteed pledge allegiance, if you don't mind, if you please stand and kind of face whatever flag is closest to you. And we'll go ahead and ask Councilmember Wilson if she'll lead us in that, in that moment of silence.
Welcome, and if you'd please join me with a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. And then if we'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate that. Okay. The council, we got a lot of, a lot of things going to be discussed tonight. We'll move through those as efficiently as we can. We will begin with the consent items. There are three Roy City Council meeting minutes. Do I have any discussion or comments on those minutes?
I just wanted to mention that there are some typographical errors and some name changes, but I've talked to Morgan about those. And I will be getting those to her, so. Other than that, I think that's the only thing I've noticed.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, do I then have a motion to approve the consent items, specifically the February 18th Roy City Council meeting minutes? The April 21st, 2020 Roy City Council meeting minutes and the May 5th, 2020 Roy City Council meeting minutes?
I make that motion.
I'll second it with my, those minor changes we discussed.
Right.
Perfect. Okay, I got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Ah, I heard you, Joe. Okay, approved. Thank you. We do have some action items. We're going to basically begin these, the series of action items with asking then. Camille will be the first one to kind of talk about the topic. Then I'll ask for a motion to go into a public hearing. And then we'll, we'll wait for comments from public hearing. Then we'll go close the public hearing and then we'll have council comments and questions, and then I'll ask for your vote. So we'll begin then with Resolution 20-13 of the Roy City City Council approving the enterprise fund transfer. So Camille, I believe you're leading the conversation. Thank you.
Yes, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to provide you with more information regarding the enterprise fund transfers. And for Resolution 20-13 for your consideration to approve the fiscal year 2021 enterprise fund transfers. This public hearing was a new state requirement in 2017. And the purpose of the public hearing is to present an accounting of how the money in the enterprise funds is being used to cover administrative overhead costs attributable to the operations of the enterprise funds and receive public input on these proposed transfers. Roy City's general fund, information technology fund, and risk management fund currently provide administrative clerical maintenance and other support for the city's enterprise utility funds. These personnel include the city manager, city recorder, city attorney, legal and risk management staff, public works director and staff, management services director, and accounting payroll, HR, and utility billing staff, IT professionals, and equipment operators. These positions are split between the general fund and the enterprise funds. The money transferred from the utility enterprise funds are proportional to the amount of time these positions spend working on the utility enterprise funds. This is something we review each year with the budget. And we appropriate our time spent on the enterprise utility funds and come up with a percentage of our time spent there. And that's how we come up with the amount of these transfers. We do not transfer any money for costs not associated with the operations of the enterprise funds. So I want to review the proposed transfers with you. We're proposing $921,777 from the Water and Sewer Utility Fund to cover administrative support from the General Fund IT Fund and Risk Management Fund. $127,958 from the Stormwater Fund to cover administrative support from the General Fund IT Fund and Risk Management Fund. $5,795 from the Stormwater Utility Fund to cover clerical and labor support from the Water and Sewer Utility Fund. $240,884 from the Solid Waste Utility Fund to cover administrative support from the General Fund IT Fund and Risk Management Fund. $16,392 from the Solid Waste Utility Fund to cover clerical and labor support from the Water and Sewer Utility Fund. And $2,566 from the Solid Waste Utility Fund to cover labor provided by the Stormwater Utility Fund for cleanup costs. We recommend that the city council receive public input on these enterprise fund transfers and consider approval of the proposed Resolution 20-13.
Thank you, Camille. Good rundown. Okay, do I have a motion then to go into public hearing to discuss Resolution 20-13?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Joe, any opposed? Okay, with that, we're in a public hearing. Do we have anybody who's on would like to make comments relative to the enterprise fund transfer?
Mayor, I did have two people that had requested to make comment on this. I sent both of them the Zoom invitation. And neither of them are on right now. And I don't have an email responding to my Zoom invitation as of this afternoon. And I just checked it again. So I know two people wanted to, but I don't show them here yet.
Okay. Well. We have to move on. I don't want to wait too long. I guess we can wait for a public comment period in this thing if they want to come back and make comment opportunities, but I believe we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make a decision without their input. So with that. Counsel then, having seen that nobody in public, wanting to make comment on public hearing, do I have a motion then to close public hearing on the Resolution 20-13?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Hearing done. We're out of a public hearing. Let's go ahead, counsel. Any questions or comments for Camille associated what was presented?
I, I just have a quick comment, Mayor. I, I think it's really important for our public to understand that the amount transferred is, is proportional to the job that they are doing with utilities. So it is not just a, an overall transfer, but it has to do with the amount of time that they actually commit to working with the utilities. So I think that's really important for our public to understand that that's, that's why that those transfers are made.
Perfect. Great comment, Jan. Any other comments, counsel? Okay, hearing done, then. Jen, I appreciate that because what you said is absolutely true. Let's go ahead then. Do I have a motion then to approve Resolution 20-13 of the Roy City Council approving the enterprise fund transfer?
So moved.
I heard Diane's lips move. You're on mute, Diane. Okay, I have Diane made a motion. I have a second. And did I hear you say second?
Yeah.
Okay, we have, we have Diane to give a second. This is a roll call vote. Morgan? Need to go off mute, Morgan?
Sorry. Let's see. Okay, Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Who had that motion?
Diane gave us the first motion and Jackson gave us the second.
Thank you. All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we have the Resolution 20-14 approving the adjustments to the fiscal year 2020 budget. Camille, I believe you're discussing this one as well. Thank you.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. We are here this evening to present Resolution 20-14 for your consideration to amend the current year fiscal year 2020 budget based on the information you received in your council packets. This proposed resolution will increase the previously approved fiscal year 2020 budget by $3,259. Sorry, let me say that again, $3,259,392. The city has received a few grants we need to recognize the revenue and corresponding expenses for. Police received $10,500 in grant funding from the police asset forfeiture and the JAG grants. We also need to carry forward $10,166 of beer tax funds that we received in the previous year. The fire department received $18,830 in CARES Act funding to cover costs related to ambulance transports during the COVID-19 pandemic. We are also recognizing $30,000 in delinquent tax revenue we received. Weber County collects the delinquent tax revenue, and we're unsure of what the total amount will be until we receive the final property tax distribution in March of each year from the county. We also propose truing up the budget for last year's Roy Days. Every year, we look at the previous year and adjust the budget for excess fees and private donations we received. So the Roy Days event fees came in $7,950 higher than budgeted. And we also need to recognize private contributions received in prior years of approximately $35,000. These amounts offset expenses the city has to set up the venue, cover employee overtime, and host the celebration. And this amount received will also be used to pay for the Miss Roy Scholarship Awards. We've made sure we included that in this budget. And we'll book a liability so we can cover that for this upcoming year. We have received a few large building permits and plan check fees related to the MIDA project. These revenues are one-time and are not anticipated to be collected in the future. These building permits resulted in revenue of approximately $600,000 over budget estimates. Approved a surplus of multiple fixed assets a few weeks ago. We recently sold all of those fixed assets, and that brought in approximately $100,000 to the city that wasn't previously budgeted. Based on the current unknown economic impacts due to COVID-19, we are proposing that we transfer excess revenues to the Capital Projects Fund for future allocation. The transfer to the Capital Projects Fund would be held in fund balance in that account until capital purchases and projects are presented to council for funding consideration in fiscal year 2021. We have also increased the use of fund balance to offset any decreases in revenues due to COVID-19 and to account for the transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. As a reminder, the final amount transferred in use of fund balance amounts will be presented to the city council later this year once we finalize the audit and present the CAFR report. We also include an increase to both the Storm Sewer Development Fund and Park Development Fund based on impact fees collected. Impact fees in these funds are restricted to be spent on developing our storm sewer system and continued development and enhancements of our parks to serve new residents moving into our city. The Storm Sewer Development Fund will increase $57,000, and the Park Development Fund will increase $70,200. Administration recommends that you receive public comment and approve the adjustments as proposed in Resolution 20-14 to adjust the fiscal year 2020 budgets. Thank you.
Thanks, Camille. Okay. We need to go into a public hearing. Counsel, do I have a motion then to go into public hearing to discuss the, to discuss the adjustments to fiscal year 2020 budget?
So moved.
I second. So we have Jan Burrell moved, and we have a second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Hearing done. We're now in a public hearing. Is there been anybody out there who'd like to make comment about the adjustments to the fiscal year 2020 budget? Morgan?
I didn't receive any requests for this public hearing, Mayor.
Okay. I'm not hearing or seeing anything, anybody on there, so I'm gonna assume everybody is comfortable with that. Having here, not hearing anybody making comment, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. That's Diane.
I second it.
And second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. Thank you. Okay, now counsel, any comments or questions you have for Camille on the fiscal year 2020 budget adjustments?
Just, just a quick comment again. I'm sorry, Mayor, but I, I think it's, it's noteworthy that, that our audits have always been clean. And so when we move things around or when our, our accounting department recommends a move, it, it is for the benefit of our citizens and for, for the benefit of the council. So I appreciate what they've done, the study that they've done. We look very good, basically, in, in all studies, so.
Yeah. Yeah, great comment, Jan. Appreciate that. Any other comments, counsel?
I'm not a numbers person. I'm impressed in everything they've done here.
Yeah. I, I do have one question. I forwarded that to the, to the staff and courtesy copy council. It basically talks about on the worksheet that was provided. It indicates the capital project fund's revenue is to increase by 1.5 million. You heard that? My question was, does the capital project fund require specific project expenditures to be individually identified and listed? And I believe, Camille, you might be able to provide us an answer on that.
No, at this time, we don't need to have them listed. We can just transfer over and hold it in fund balance. And then in fiscal year 2021, once revenues has, have stabilized, we can come back and recommend specific purchases and projects with that funding.
Perfect. So counsel, one of the things you might want to consider as we get into the next year, there will be opportunities, we know, because we're still not sure what our tax revenues are going to be. They're still out there. But if there is in fact some opportunities where we may want to make purchases or put projects in motion, there appears to be some funding in motion, in place to take care of that. And so just be aware of it. We may have an opportunity to open this back up and adjust the budget accordingly. One of the recommend.
Being new to the council, what is usually a capital project? What usually is, you know, is classified as a capital project?
Any.
Matt, Camille?
I can answer that. It would be anything that is going to be purchased over and used over a long period of time. Something like a vehicle, something like a fire truck. That would be more automotive capital projects. You could also do things in parks. You could do things for the police department, anything that is going to be purchased, like a one-time purchase, but a long time use.
So with that comment, if the council was considering purchasing property for a cemetery, could this money be used for that project?
Correct.
Okay. I just was wondering if it was like, like something that we provide a service, use for service, or an actual, you know, truck or like cemetery or something. I was just curious about that, so.
Yeah, it's, it's typically the reason why they let us move it over there. It's because it's, it's used for larger purposes. So like, just in this budget, we, we transfer money over $185,000 for a fire truck because in 10 years, we might need a fire truck.
Is it also a depreciable item?
It is. So you depreciate these items.
One of the things I talked about in last council meeting was reviewing, doing a budget review quarterly. I know periodically you do it. But because of the things that's going on and that, I would like to see a quarterly budget review just to true up things. And based on projections, does it come in better or worse so we can make adjustments?
I, I think, good plan, Joe. We're going to have to do a much more frequent review than we've ever had to do in the past.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, what we plan on that, Matt, I think it's an excellent idea. I will indicate to you, Matt's gonna tell you, he hasn't yet, but he's probably gonna tell you, we're probably gonna have a budget review on the first city council meeting in July. We have some CARES Act money coming and, and he has got to, he's gonna put that into a budget. So don't be surprised, Joe. It may come a little quicker than just quarterly. It could happen rather quickly. So just be prepared.
I'd say at least minimum quarterly. If we have to do it more often, then so be it.
Agreed.
Okay, great comment. Anything else, counsel? Any comments, questions? Okay, thank you then. Do I have a motion then to approve Resolution dash 20-14 approving the adjustments to the fiscal year 2020 budget as explained? So moved. Okay, Joe Paul approved it. And who seconded?
Dan.
Okay, Jan seconded. Morgan, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, we have Ordinance 20-7 adopting the fiscal year 2021 budget. Camille, I believe you're talking this one as well, please.
I am. Thank you, Mayor. So now that you've approved the enterprise fund transfers and taken care of the year-end adjustments for fiscal year 2020, it's now time for us to move forward and start focusing on fiscal year 2021. So we presented the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget to the city council on May 5th. The total general fund budget is $17,807,711. We held a budget workshop on June 2nd, and we've had great dialogue and discussion regarding the budget and what's proposed to be funded. We've also discussed the proposed reductions due to COVID-19 and the plan for amending the budget as needed as we move forward into the new year. We've answered all of the questions we've received from the mayor and council, and we haven't received any additional feedback from citizens. So no changes are proposed to the proposed budget. So the final budget adoption is the same as the budget that was proposed on May 5th. Ordinance 20-7 adopts the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget for Roy City and adopts a certified tax rate of .001959 as provided by the Weber County Auditor. We recommend that you receive public input and consider approval for Ordinance 20-7 adopting the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Thank you, Camille. Okay. Counsel, let's. Okay, council, let's go into a public hearing. Do I have a motion to go to public hearing to discuss Ordinance 20-7?
I move. We go to a public hearing.
Okay, Diane?
I'll second.
Okay, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Joe? Okay.
Yes, sorry, I'm having technical difficulties again.
That's okay. I just want to make sure, make sure we get that. Any opposed? Hearing none. We're in a public hearing. Is there anybody out there who'd like to make comment on the fiscal year 2021 budget? Morgan, do we have any emails or any, anybody plan to make comment?
Mayor, no, I did not receive any emails or requests for comment during this public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go, do I have a motion then to close the public hearing on the Ordinance 20-7?
So moved.
Okay, Jan. Diane, seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Hearing none. We're going out of public hearing. Council, any comments or questions you have dealing with the Ordinance 20-7?
I have a question. Camille, I'm sorry, I remembered a question.
You're just fine.
So when we made a change to open the complex earlier, I was thinking that that might change the budget proposition. But I guess we don't need to do that. And I was wondering if you could just address that just quickly for me.
Absolutely. In the budget work session that we had last council meeting, we discussed it and we talked about the options. We had two options. We could amend the budget from the beginning or we could wait and do a budget adjustment in probably August or September once we kind of see how sales taxes coming in and determine if we want to increase sales tax or if we still need to take that funding from fund balance. And the direction administration was given was that council would prefer to wait until August or September to make that adjustment. So that is what our plan is, is we will bring that back after we've done more assessment on what our revenues are at the complex and how sales taxes coming in. So I have notes and we will not forget to bring that back for an amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, great question. Anybody else has a question or comment for, for Camille? Okay, seeing none or hearing none then. Council, do I have then a a motion to approve Ordinance 20-7, adopting the fiscal year 2021 budget?
So moved.
Diane? Made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Joe has the second. This is a roll call vote. Morgan?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving through these rather quickly. That's perfect. Thank you. Council, we have Resolution 20-15, amending the Roy City Personnel Policy and Procedural Manual. Camille, why don't you go ahead and explain some of the things that we're looking for here and what you're looking for? And then we'll open for, for council comments and questions.
Great. As department directors, we follow the personnel policy and manual as adopted by city council and we always look for ways that we can improve our policies. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to act quickly to protect our employees. And during this transition, we realized we do not have a teleworking policy to set parameters for employees and to check out IT equipment to perform their jobs while teleworking. We are proposing this change to ensure we have a policy in place so that as future circumstances arise, we have a policy to follow to help protect city resources and set expectations for employees. So this policy is proposed so that we have a policy in place to implement teleworking and have formal guidelines to protect city resources. Teleworking will not be available to all employees and it's not intended to occur regularly for all employees. This policy is just in place as circumstances arise and positions that are considered for teleworking must have a way to measure performance output. This policy also establishes guidelines for checking out IT equipment and creates an agreement to set expectations for employees during teleworking. All teleworking would be done on city equipment and employees would not be allowed to use their own personal equipment to telework. And the teleworking agreement must be approved by both the department director and city manager. So as I mentioned, this is not, our intent with this policy is not to implement teleworking for all employees. Right now, we just realized during this that we do not have a policy in place. And we've been working together throughout this to keep our procedures consistent between departments, but we would like to have a formal policy to refer to in the future as this, situations like this may arise. The other changes we are proposing at this time is a change to the Employee Conduct Section to establish a fraud and ethics hotline. This would be available to report suspected fraud, waste, and misuse of city resources or abuse of a position. The fraud and ethics hotline is the same number of our, as our HR office. So these would be private confidential ways to report if employees witness something and then we could look into that appropriately. The use of city supplies, equipment, and property, just changes to clarify that all official social media posts must be approved prior to posting. And we're proposing a few changes to the drug-free workplace section as well. We are addressing the use of medical cannabis in accordance with the Utah Medical Cannabis Act. We referred to what the state did in their policy and used that as a reference. We are also proposing a change to the drug and alcohol testing to amend it to remove pre-employment drug testing for regular employees. Drug testing is still required for public safety positions and CDL license holders. And now it's based on reasonable suspicion. So we would still be able to do drug and alcohol testing whenever needed. So we recommend that you approve Resolution 20-15, amending the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual.
Okay, council, any questions or comments relative to this proposed change to the personnel policy?
I have a question about the teleworking that, that's not intended to be a long-term or it's on an as-needed based on the conditions that we're going through now or could potentially go through in the future. I don't think it's intended to be open up Pandora's box, but it's, just make sure that there's regiment in place that it's on an as-needed basis.
I have a comment on that, Joe. I, I think all studies are showing that in some positions, it's a more productive work environment for them to work from home. And so I think we, we don't limit that, but indeed, we, we make checks and balances for the possibility of that. And, and I think the policy indicates that with the director and the city manager both being involved in those decisions, then, then that prevents a misuse of that. But all studies are indicating, that I've read at least, that that can be a really good possibility. Not, not every day necessarily, but certainly with, with review by those people.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we're going through the same thing at my work and, and studies indicate that. I was just more saying that there's safeguards in place as the city, different departments and that are providing services to customers, to the public, that we have coverage.
Obviously, some departments are not, it's not even a possibility and it's not good policy in, in most departments. But there are a few cases and, and I think that it warrants review anytime they're, they request it or, or suggest it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. It, it's being pushed to a department head and a city manager for approval, so that's good.
Okay, so let's, let's see if we can summarize that comment, Matt, because I think it's important. We're hearing kind of two stories here. No question, the fact is, by establishing this, if there's ever another pandemic, then you've now provided guidance within the Personnel Policy Manual to allow them to operate under this teleworking strategy. But I'm kind of hearing from a couple of council members, the suggest is, there may be an, there may be an argument here that suggests is maybe you could use that as a routine part of doing business if you can find that there has been increased productivities been realized as allowing people to do teleworking. So here's my question to you. You and I talked about this briefly. There probably isn't but 10, maybe 20 people in the entire city who would basically be able to qualify to work from home on certain issues. Would the city want to look at this maybe a little differently and see if there's opportunities by which you could, the city could benefit by allowing teleworking rather than just simply say it will be as, in case of emergency or some other kind of, of a situation that would warrant?
Well, we definitely could look at it in that regard. Obviously, I've read the study myself and I, I agree with them. I think it could be a very good thing. We would also want to take it case by case because we service the public. And just like Councilmember Burrell suggested and Councilmember Paul, most cities or most, most positions in the city, police, fire, it'd be very difficult to, to telework. And as you indicated, maybe 10 to 15 people, there's a possibility there. I think we could, we would definitely have to take it case by case in the city. And we would have to also be able to evaluate those positions and performance in those positions and know that they're more productive at home. It can become a better, a really good competitive advantage for the city to have these type of employees. And if it helps morale and things like that, we could, we could look at it case by case. So I think that's the best way forward with it.
Council, your thoughts on that comment?
Well, I know my three, my three children are working from home and two out of the three said that they get more done working at home than they do in an office because they're never interrupted by a fellow employee. And they've done more, they're more productive. So that's just their thoughts. And they, so anyway. I, I, I think it's important too to recognize that it would be, I, I hate to use the word privileged, but it would be upon request and it would be, you know, an option, but not a guarantee.
That's more what I was referring to.
It's not entitlement, yes. It would have to be in the benefit of the city.
That's a good point.
Well, then, I think I'm hearing, Brian, Diane, your thoughts on it?
I agree that it would definitely be an option that needs to be followed closely and, and leave it as an option.
Okay.
But not, not a privilege, a guarantee, not a right.
Okay, Brian?
I, I would agree with Diane. I think if we leave it as an option, then that gives the city, why not say, that gives Matt the authority he needs to be able to say yes and no, depending on the circumstance.
Okay, great comments. Matt, then, can we take away from this then? That if in your judgment and your assessment between you and the department heads, that there might be an opportunity, I don't think you need city council approval. The approval of this document will allow that, but if you just simply notify us that you do have individuals who are teleworking after we get through the pandemic. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. Great comments. Anything else?
Yes. So in regards to the teleworking, so Camille, when you were giving your presentation, I thought you said that staff could not use their own equipment and only could use city equipment. But as I'm reading the first page, I gathered that it says the city is not required to provide the materials. They could, but they're not required to. And so maybe you can just clarify to make sure I understood properly what you were saying and then versus what I'm reading.
Absolutely. So our intent with that was we do not want employees doing work on their personal computers. So we would have a component of this teleworking policy that IT would have to sign off saying that we can get them a laptop or computer so that we can still comply with grandma and all of our rules that way. We meant in there that we would not provide them with internet service, a telephone, things like that. They would require, be required to provide some of that office equipment to do their job. We wouldn't provide them with a desk or chair or things like that. But our intent is that we would provide them with a computer on our network so that we're in compliance with all the rules and we don't have any city things on any personal computers. So the intent was, it kind of depends on what the equipment is, but we wouldn't want them using personal computers.
Okay, thank you. And then I did have a question in regards to the, the drug-free workplace, section 1507.
Yes.
I was wondering, under the drug and alcohol testing, on section two, and Andy, I, I had forgotten, I don't know if I asked Camille or Andy on this one. It had mentioned that testing shall be required of the driver on the post-accident section. And it's mentioned places. And I was just wondering if we could possibly consider changing that to employee because at least in my experience, there are other positions that could have accidents and that is not just related to driving. And maybe I'm missing the further intent, but I just wanted to ask that question if, if we should consider that.
Oh, and, and I'm sorry, Diane. I'm trying to look through this right now and I don't, the changes that we made, I believe, were just dealing with pre-employment and reasonable suspicion. So I, I didn't know that we changed anything in what's in front of you on the driving. Is that correct? And Camille, do you know?
That's correct. This would be in section two, a policy that we did not propose any changes to.
So you've just given us the complete, the complete section, but that wasn't something you proposed as a change?
It's, it's something we can take a look at, Diane. And we'll, we'll take a look at it for you. And if we need to come back, well, let's talk again. And if we need to come back and make that change, we'll do it.
All right, great. Sounds good.
Are all city employees randomly drug tested? Even those that don't drive? So no, they're not? Okay.
Most.
Most are. But what, what's happened recently, there's been a few cases through-
Andy, you just hit mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
But there's been a couple of places in about three different states where they've held that pre-employment testing without reasonable suspicion is a violation of the Fourth Amendment. So that's, and I think we're pretty much at the forefront in that. I, I'm not aware of anybody else that I had looked at, seeing if they had that. But I, it, we, we still qualify as a drug, drug-free workplace because we, we don't tolerate that and we don't allow it. But it comes down to, can you test people without reasonable suspicion? Now, you can with public safety employees. So police and fire are there or anybody's required to have that CDL. There's random testing, pre-employment testing, all that. But with regular employees, if there isn't a reasonable suspicion, you can run into a problem. So that's, we've taken that out of there. I think, and I, I, we had a discussion on this in the city and we've only had maybe two pre-employment positives in, I don't know how many years. But, and so we do spend quite a bit of money on that too. It just, it is unnecessary. And especially in light of those recent rulings, it's, it's the right thing to do.
Great comment. Great questions. Okay. Any other thoughts on this? Okay, Camille, you made one comment. Let me ask you this, if you can help us define it. You mentioned that, that they pre-approve social media posts. I assume that comment is associated with the social media post on government websites.
Yes, the official city social media posts.
Okay, help me, Andy, just one thing. Brian, you'll need to help me on this one as well. We do have the Business Advisory Board. They have developed a website. They are not technically paid. It's an unpaid position, a volunteer position. But in many cases, they represent the interest of Roy City in terms of issues like bilocal campaigns and stuff.
There should be review too then. There should be reviewed too then. They, because there was a committee that was set up through the city council.
Exactly. So do we want to have their posts then screened by the city before they go live on a social media?
My preference would be that we do have that reviewed. I mean, if people are speaking on behalf of the city, we really ought to make sure and that everything is legal and proper. So we're not infringing on anybody's free speech rights. They can do whatever they want and, and on their own sites. But when it comes to a city site, who, they're speaking on behalf of the city and there really ought to be some type of review.
Okay, Brian, how do you feel about that?
That makes sense. I mean, Andy's smarter than I am.
I don't know about that, Brian.
But Brian, you'll be the one who has to take the message to the Business Advisory Board. I want to make sure you feel comfortable with it.
Mayor, this information came out of PIO, the Public Information Officers Class, that a lot of the city employees, they really stress the fact that there needs to be some type of approval process. And the reason why is so many cities are trying to put forth effort into creating posts and creating good things to put out there to the general public. But you can do that for a year and one bad post could create a lot more havoc than anything else.
So absolutely.
That's why it's heavily advised to do so.
Great comment.
You know, it wouldn't hurt if, if Andy or you, Mayor, come and speak to the group and let them know what is actually required of them when it comes to posting because we've got them now so involved with, with projects that benefit the city that I think we're going to hear more and more from them.
Okay, great comment. Andy, I'll coordinate with you and see what, how best to approach that. You're definitely a better person to be a spokesperson to that, but I can carry the message. I think I've been invited to the next BAB meeting, I think in July. But if you'd like to step up and talk to them about why that's important, that'd be perfect. If not, I'm sure they can speak for you and share your message, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, great comments on that, thank you. Any other comments associated with the personnel policy? Okay, hearing none then. Do I have a motion then to approve resolution 20-15 amending the Roy City Personal Policy and Procedural Manual?
So moved.
Okay, Jan, you motioned first. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Diane, we have a second. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
And we didn't hear you.
I can't.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you Morgan. Okay, we have consideration of resolution 20-17, accepting a special warrant deed from the Roy City RDA Board for parcel of real property. I believe this is one that we talked about earlier. Matt, I wasn't sure who's going to talk about this. Camille, you can talk it?
Yes.
Thank you.
As we discussed as a redevelopment board a few weeks ago, there is this parcel of property just north of George Wall and North Park. And we, the RDA Board approved the sale of that parcel to the city. This special warranty deed would just accept this property from the RDA and the city accepts it at the purchase price of $10. So we recommend that you approve resolution 20-17 and approve the special warranty deed for this.
Okay. Everybody remind, remember what we're talking about. Counsel, any questions or comments associated with this, this accepting this piece of property?
No, I think it's just a transfer of one piece to another makes sense.
Okay. Okay, I say, and I hear no more comments or questions. Everybody okay with it then? Then let's have, do I have a motion then to approve resolution 20-17? The city will accept a special warranted deed for the Roy City Art, from the Roy City RDA Board for a parcel of property, a parcel of real property. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Joe Paul, any, do I have a second?
Check.
Okay, Brian, seconded. This is a roll call vote. So Morgan?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, we have, Camille, thank you. You've had a lot of work going on tonight. Appreciate your input and expertise in walking us through this. We're now going to shift. We have consideration of resolution 20-18, it's interlocal agreement with Hiller Force Base for Fire Protection Services. Greg, would you like to talk to this?
Yes, Mayor. Thanks for having me. This is the first time I've been able to address the mayor and council since I've been hired. So glad to be here and at least present something as important as this.
Welcome.
This interlocal agreement, the, the question that was asked that, that's there was specifically about the MIDA, the MIDA agreement itself. And that's specifically for the, their installation development authority. And I believe everybody understands that's for the Falcon Hill or enhanced use lease projects that go on there. That is different from a interlocal agreement that it is, is what we're trying to do here. We, we have a couple of issues with this particular agreement outside of that. I know Hiller Force Base has tried to work this through US Code 1856A, which I also sent out specifically about that falls into what they can do to enter into reciprocal agreements in general. The reimbursement side of the house on any type of agreement, agreements that we go into stuff like this is when you do it, the federal government is specifically falls under the defense support of civil authorities. And that, that agreement covers kind of your larger events, aircraft trashes, hazardous materials, technical rescue, kind of our long-term events, not, not necessarily the shorter-term ones that we try to enter into with the mutual aid or automatic aid agreements. There is one agreement that is, is already out there and it's been out there since 2010. And that is, and it's a current ongoing review agreement. And that is provide ambulance and ALS transport. We haven't done much of this to the north end of the base mostly because the gate is closed after hours. And, and the only one, the only way in is through the west gate or through the Clearfield, North Davis, it covers that response. So the, the agreement that we're, we're looking at here, this mutual aid agreement that's there has, has been reviewed. We've looked at this particular one. It's, it's set up to, to, you know, be reviewed annually, but go for 20 years. And Hiller Force Base is asking to potentially transfer this or make the automatic aid. The difference between a mutual aid and an automatic aid agreement, which most people do, is mutual aid, you actually have to call. So you, whoever the first arriving fire officer is would realize this is beyond their scope and they would have to reach back to dispatch or in this case, you'd, you'd run through potentially a couple of different dispatch 911 centers to request for Hiller Force Base to respond. And an automatic aid agreement just puts them in, right in stacking and dispatch would automatically dispatch them for anything, for threat to a home, immediate threat to life and that type of thing, large type events. And that's, that's the piece that was not really clarified in this agreement. And with that being said, the, the recommendation or my recommendation, and after talking with, with Andy and Matt, is to table this resolution for now until we can get the, the specifics worked out and maybe we rewrite it or amend the agreement and for further approval. So with the, the council's approval, that's, that's what my recommendation would be. And we'd bring this back at the soonest possible time, hopefully in July, to be able to be presented back to the city council first or, or maybe even the second meeting in July.
Hey Greg, you have a great rundown. Let's appreciate you catching all that. Counsel comments and questions?
No, I'd make a motion, we table it.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a second to table this resolution 20-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have anybody opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and table resolution 20-18, a local agreement between Hiller Force Base for Fire Protection Services. Thank you. Greg, I think your chief, you're also going to be talking about resolution 20-19, an interlocal agreement with Clinton City for Fire Protection Services, please.
That's correct. And this type of agreement is also a, runs into an automatic aid agreement as well, like I had mentioned. So it covers into those type of things. I know a lot of the concerns are about how often, and we help each other out for these type of things and, and is, is one, is one municipality, you know, being, getting more out of this than, than the other. And so I did some research on that today as well and I sent that, the information out. But in this case, you know, Clinton and what they're, they're able to provide as one city with just a minimal staffing, they're able to provide us quite a bit more lately over the last 18 months than, than, than we have. But this includes us responding into their area with paramedics because as you know, or maybe you don't, the paramedic service that Davis County has been provided is, is going away over the next few years and is slowly, slowly getting less and less all the time. So their, their reliance on that to have our rescue go out into their area is happening and we've done that in the last 18 months. We've done, we responded into Clinton 20 times. And Clinton has come into us for ambulance transports to include assist with our, with our paramedics when we need it as well and to include structural fires. They've been, been there quickly for us as well. So my recommendation is to also approve this resolution.
Okay, counsel comments, questions associated with this resolution?
I have a question in clarification. Thank you. I was wondering, when you talk about them using our ambulance service and in the, in the agreement, it talks about, you know, no charge because it's, you know, back and forth. But I guess if they're using our ambulance service, then the person that's being transported, that's what, that's who would be charged for that service? Or how does that work in the ambulance world there?
That, that's correct. Counselmember, that's, that's a, when the members insurance would actually be billed, we would handle that billing process through our, through our billing clerk and then through our recovery agencies pieces. And then if we, if we go and provide a rescue service, that becomes the PMA or the paramedic aborts fee. And so we get that paramedic fee as well for, for being part of that. So when we, when we need that level of care.
It's just that we wouldn't be charging Clinton for going into their city. That's where the interlocal agreement comes in then.
That's correct. And, and the services and the vehicle, you know, the use, all that stuff, the fuel is all, all included in that billing process versus actually the city having to enter any more, more costs.
Thank you.
So how far north and how far south do we ever get called or do we go on a call?
So.
Just that curiosity?
We, we can go, we can go into the boundaries of Clearfield. We don't really go any farther than that. We've been down into West Point and some of the more rural areas in West Point West. But that's, that's on rare occasions because of their agreements within Davis County. But we do have a PMA and a agreement with Davis as well. But in Clinton, we can go pretty much anywhere in their city is what their agreement is. So.
But then how far north, like Brigham? You, you don't travel that far, do you? Like just?
The, the, the rescue can travel up to Brigham, but Brigham now has the paramedic service and, and within the other agencies that are close to there respond and take care of that.
Okay.
And to your question, just for clarification, there's definitely a paramedic service associated with this and there is reimbursement. The challenge Jan, we have, and, and we've got a lot of data and chief is going to flush through all the data with Matt and we're going to try to find an answer here. But we provide fire protection service under these interlocal agreements to a lot of cities and a lot of the county. And there is no reimbursement on those. And when you look at the numbers, and we've looked at the numbers, I will just tell you right now, best I can tell, we are basically providing a lot more service outside of Roy City in terms of fire protection service than what we get from other cities in Roy. Now here's the bottom line. The bottom line is, is that Roy City residents pay for that service because there's no reimbursement. Now, I did ask the city about four, five, six months ago. I says if in fact we lose a vehicle to an accident, I think our insurance coverage will cover damages to vehicles above 50,000. I think that's the, that's the minimum. But if in fact it's some damage below that, then if there's damage while we're on a, on a, maybe we're supporting Riverdale, maybe we're supporting Hooper, maybe we're going to Plain City. The fact of the matter is that we have damage that's under 50,000, we kind of suck that cost up as damage. And so I just want to make sure you understand the playing field that we operate under these interlocal agreements. I, I don't want to debate this in terms of what's the cost of a human life because I will tell you right now, our public service team has saved people's lives outside of Roy City. And I don't want to put a value on that. But I just want you to understand is, is that there's a lot of costs that's associated with what the service we're providing and there's, you know, interlocal agreements that we're not reimbursed for. So just be aware of it. We'll try to get the hard numbers laid out in front of the council and we can kind of see what we want to do with that. Okay?
I have a point of order. There's a spelling error in the second line of the resolution. It says agreement between Roddy City, that should be Roy City.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Go ahead Jan.
Interlocal agreements, is there any correlation between police service and fire service in those interlocal agreements?
In, in the, in the agreement that basically we're working, it's specifically to fire. You know, I, I believe the police departments have similar agreements on what they'll respond to and, and cover and assist as, as well as upon request.
I, I was just, I, I guess I, my question is, I, I recognize that we might be the better neighbor as far as fire services do, is concerned, but we might receive a lot of services in other areas that, that would also be a benefit to us. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm asking that question, I guess.
There are no.
Maybe we would benefit more, you know, I, if we, we might be the better fire neighbor, but we might receive more from our neighbors as far as police service is concerned.
There are no local agreements like that between police agencies. We do have the interlocal agreements for the crime scene folks, SWAT and the strike force, but those are the only things. And, oh, and the homicide task force. We, we work together on that, but we all, we all just work together. We don't have those type of interlocal agreements.
Right, but I think, I think we'd benefit from our neighbors' help. I guess Carl is where I was.
We all, we do.
I, granted, we are very, very good to help them, but we also benefit from their help. And so I would hate to also irritate our neighbors.
Well, I think that's a great point. I, I think what we have to look at these, from this perspective is what does the data tell us? It's all about what's the data tell us because, because I suggest to you is, is that, is that there is a proportion of amount of money that's given to Weber County to cover some paramedic services. I will indicate to you, best guess is Ogden gets the lion's share of that. We get a portion of that. But is it equally distributed until the data flushes out exactly what services were provided? Then I think we need to look at that. But let me give you an example. There's a proposal being worked right now that deals about heavy lift in our, in our fireside. And there is a debate going on right now and discussion going on that suggests is Roy City may ask to help offset the cost of a heavy lift devices going into a particular scene. devices going into a particular scene, because we do have occasions when there are some needs for that heavy lift. There's only three of them in the county. One of them's in Riverdale. And the expectation would be is is that all the municipalities around that that service would need to cough, would need to contribute to replacement of the equipment, replacement of that, keep that mobile and keep it operational. That makes sense. But I think we just have to put all of these things, Jan, as you're suggesting, in perspective, and let's look at all of it and find out. And I will tell you this. And Carl, you probably have a better perspective, but I'm talking about people I've talked to in Hooper. It is not uncommon that the first people who arrive in Hooper is Roy City Police in an emergency. And and there's that makes sense, because they're serviced by the Sheriff's Department, and it might be will be the Sheriff's Department may have people scattered somewhere else in the county, but the first assistance may be and oftentimes could be Roy City Police in an emergency. And so just recognize. Go ahead. For both Hooper and West Haven, probably ninety percent of the time, if it's a an emergency type of call, we're the ones who arrive first. Exactly. And so just recognize that we're providing that service, and we need to do that. That's important. But I just want to make sure you understand there's an associated cost associated with that, and I just want you to recognize as we look at all these things, we need to provide you what the facts say, what's the data point to, and then let's make some informed decisions about how we deal with that. But I don't want you to go into ignorance on this. I will tell you, when I had some family members unfortunately were killed in a fire in 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 Sunset about two years ago. I will tell you, the first fire department on scene was Clinton, and the second fire department on that fire in that house was Roy City. And the Sunset Fire Department didn't arrive until a little bit later. It was a unique situation. We'll get to the details. But I'm telling you, if there's an emergency, Roy City responds and we provide it. But there is a cost associated with that when you start factoring in everything that our citizens provide to this community. Okay, just be aware of that. Any other comments? Go ahead, Dan.
That you were talking how the county does have some funds that it distributes. Once these numbers are in, does that mean that those funds are possibly is negotiable to to reallocate those funds, or how does that work when you were referring to the county funds?
I'd like to have that argument. Let me back up. I don't have an argument, but I'd like to have that conversation with the county, and more importantly, with my fellow mayors. If the data basically provides supports and it has to be data driven, if the data supports that Roy City is providing a sizable amount of service outside of Roy City, then I think there just needs to be whatever funds may be available. I think we just make sure that those numbers are equally distributed. Now, it's only the paramedic side of this. That's only one component of Chief Chief Golden's piece, but it is a part. But we usually look at the data and find out whether that debt is telling the right story, and are we being compensated proportionally for that? I'd like to have that conversation.
And council council member Wilson, that that agreement that for the fee and what you get is is up on a fairly regular basis, and it is all about data like the mayor mentioned. So so that information is coming forward, and and I am looking for those numbers to get all that data forward. So so we we basically get the the correct amount that we should be getting for the services we provide.
Right, that's key.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Counsel, any other comments, questions from Chief Golden's comments? Perfect. Okay, then do I have a motion then to approve resolution twenty dash nineteen, interlocal agreement with Clinton City for Fire Protection Services?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Morgan?
Councilmember Saxton. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Morgan. Okay, we're getting down there. Thank you. This is consideration of resolution twenty dash twenty on agreement for Pacific Corp for lease of property. I believe Travis is going to discuss this with us.
Yes, sir. Mayor and members of the city council, I am here to discuss resolution twenty twenty, an agreement with Pacific Corp for a lease of property. The address of the property is approximately fifty seven hundred South and thirty two sixty West. It is two point nine eight acres, and its primary or its main function is they are much needed detention basins. It is a five year agreement, and I recommend that the city council pass resolution twenty twenty.
Okay, comments, council?
Travis, is it my understanding that if we were to have to buy a retention pond, it would cost us a tremendous amount more than that?
Uh, you know, I I talked with the engineers, and they speculated it could be anywhere from three hundred thousand to a million dollars. You had to have to get it near the area. You would have to purchase the property. You would have to make sure you took care of all the inlet and outlets and and things like that. So yes, to answer your question, it would be a massive expense.
So so approving this could save us a tremendous amount of money?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's the best way. I mean, you you look at the agreement and and, you know, the average cost is roughly about ninety nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars through the term of the five years, and you would need roughly a hundred years of of that to pay for a new project.
That that was my understanding. Thank you, Travis, for clarifying that.
I have a point of clarification in the resolution. Shouldn't there be a name or description or location of the property?
The very last page, there there is a legal description of said property. It's it's where you start getting into meets and bounds and and different things like that. Right as you set up, my computer went dark, so.
I I see it on the second page, but I'm wondering, does there need to be a description or something in the description of the resolution?
Andy, do you have a comment on that?
Oh, sorry, I commented, but it was a lot. No, you don't need to have that in the resolution and make it extremely, it could make it really lengthy. So you incorporate it, and that's what that's what we've done in the resolution.
I think, let me ask a question, Travis, just to, because I I I didn't write down your address. Could you kind of just kind of explain where this is located?
Absolutely. It's it's along the the power corridor. I would like you to think probably thirty two sixty west of it's almost right behind Limquist Mortuary. It butts up with some residencies. We use one of the detention pay basins for our dog off leash area and some things like that.
Okay, I know where it's at now. Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment when I was speaking with Travis. The amount, too many of us seems, you know, a lot for that acreage, but Travis even called to, you know, see where it comes, but Pacific Corp has their own set cost, and it doesn't really matter. They've got their own. You know, so there is no negotiation regards to that. I don't know if it's going to keep going up a thousand dollars a year, every single year. They didn't say that because that's a pretty steep incline when you're talking about an increase. But then it's like Jan said, the balance is, it got us over a barrel a little bit, and so at this point in time, I I don't know that there really are other options, but but Travis did at least, I wanted to thank him for at least investigating that and trying to see if there was something we could do to modify it, but it sounds like that's not an option.
One more thing is, we need to update the name of the city manager on this. Current city manager.
I thought.
Jay Bachman on it, yeah.
I'll get that taken care of.
Okay, other comments, council? Okay, hearing done. Let me ask you then, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty, an agreement with Pacific Corp for lease of property?
I'll make that motion. Okay, Joe Paul, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and Jackson, this is a roll call vote. Morgan?
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton. Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Morgan. Okay, we're getting closer. This is consideration resolution twenty dash twenty one, an agreement for Jordan Valley Water Conservative District. I believe this is also much like a lease agreement. Travis, I believe you're talking to this one as well.
I am, and and thank you again, Mayor. I am here to discuss resolution twenty twenty one, an agreement with the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. This is just north of the property we just discussed. It is most often referred to as McCall Field. We, the city takes care of the property. Soccer happens there, several family activities of the people living in the neighborhood happens there. This agreement's a little bit, I don't want to say better, but but the nice thing about this agreement, it comes with a zero rent agreement. We do not pay Jordan Valley a penny to use that space. We just maintain it and take care of it.
And use it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's perfect. That's what you like to hear. Okay, everybody, anybody have any questions or comments relative to that piece of property in our non-cost lease agreement?
I I have one question on that, Travis. Is there is there any liability involved there?
You know, it the it's a pretty much barren piece of land. I mean, as far as we don't have a lot of structures there.
Okay.
It it's from a liability perspective, no, I don't think we have any increased liability there. Andy's helped me significantly with both these agreements and working with attorneys, and and I know there's a a section in there that he made us add to both agreements that protected the city.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Are you just talking about that soccer field right there off fifty six hundred?
Yep, exactly. Exactly.
I always thought we owned that.
No, but but interesting enough, and you break up your dish claim. Well, they call, yeah, McCall.
McCall.
But and interesting enough about that is is that it's who owns it. The Jordan Valley Water Conservative District. Interesting plan I've heard from pretty reliable sources is is that eventually to bring water into the Wasatch Front, they're going to put a pretty, they're going to put two big lines off the Bear River in in close to the Idaho border and bring the water off the Bear River right down through those power lines. So don't be surprised if you happen to look what they've got. A lot of the properties under there are being purchased by these water districts. Someday in the future, more than likely, what you'll find is is that they'll bury, you know, a fifteen foot water pipe and and literally just bring water down from the north into into the valley. Okay? Okay, any other questions or comments, council? Not hearing any then. Do I have a motion then to approve resolution twenty dash twenty one, the agreement with Jordan Valley Water Conservative District?
So moved.
Jan and Diane seconded. This is a roll call vote. Morgan?
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we got through a lot of these resolutions and ordinance. Thank you so much. Okay, this is a time for public comment. Do we have anybody out there that wants to make public comment to the council? Morgan, do you have anybody that's emailed in or they have they have on the phone?
Kevin Homer was actually one of the residents who had requested to to talk during the enterprise fund transfer public hearing. He's actually here now, so I'll go ahead and turn the time over to him if that's okay.
Okay. Kevin, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. The enterprise fund transfer, I was supporting anyway. I did miss that because I had some relatives in the hospital that I needed to take care of, but I do have some comments on some of the other things. Is it okay if I go with those?
Please, it's public comment period. Kevin, whatever you'd like to share.
All right, thank you. I know you've already voted on it on twenty fifteen, twenty dash fifteen, but I had a couple of things that I wanted to bring up maybe for you to think about in the future. The social media screening and the review process of those, will that include all of the, for for instance, the Facebook pages the city operates, whether it's Roy City or or the Fire Department, Police Department, Recreation Department? Will it include all those?
Yes.
Okay.
It will.
Now, will the city have any responsibility besides filtering those? Well, let's see, along with filtering, I think it would be good to specify who the people are, you know, what comedian it is that review those and how frequently they review those, and possibly to include the information about, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down on whatever submitted as part of the grammar requirements for the state. You know, I Mr. Blackburn could probably speak to that. But the question that I had following that is, will all of those submissions that are put on social media be subject to the the grammar requirements and have to be archived?
Yes, we do subscribe to a to a business called Social Archive, that you can actually delete your social media posts, but we archive those so that doesn't get deleted on our account, so they can be and are subject to grammar requests.
Okay, that's great to hear. That's what I was looking for, because I I know there were at least one instance that I was aware of where there was a post made by on on an official city website, and then it was caused a little bit of conflict controversy, and it was.
Yeah, that's the reason of that company. So, yep, it's you're spot on. Yep.
Great, I appreciate knowing that. Okay, also on twenty dash fifteen about teleworking, I did have a little bit of concern about the cost. And I had a suggestion for this. The cost, if we had, say, ten ten city employees that were going to be participating in the teleworking, and if the city has to buy an additional laptop for each one of those people, laptops are anywhere between fifteen hundred and three, two thousand dollars. So if we had an employee, that's fifteen to twenty thousand dollars additional out of the city budget, which, believe me, I listened to discussion about budget last week, and boy, I feel for all of you. But what I was going to say is, rather than buying those, perhaps it might be a good idea to say, well, you know, let's take the desktops that the city employees are provided right there at the city building and swap those out for a laptop that they then could take home if they needed to. So it's a way of kind of managing, instead of having two computers for them to do their job, let's just have one, just a suggestion. Anyway, that's all I had, and I I appreciate your time.
Evan, thank you. I think having those docking stations I've used them before, they're really, really effective, and I think your points will take, and that might be something particularly, Matt, if we do see opportunities that where they could basically utilize the docking station operation, both at the work as well if you decided to telework in those from home.
Yeah, with this COVID nineteen, the latest computers that we have been buying have been the docking stations. So Kevin, spot on again. Yes, we have been looking toward that and moving toward that direction.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Kevin, thank you for your inputs. Always good to hear you. Okay, any other public comments?
No, Mayor, I don't have any other comments right now.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll get out of public comment period. There is no presentations. There's no discussion items put on the agenda. And by the way, so there's no confusion, council. Council member can basically put a discussion item on the agenda. As a council member, you have the authority to do that. You may want to consider that if you have something you want to talk about. So ponder that as we as we proceed and go forward. It's now the city managers report, so Matt, do you have something you want to share with us?
Yes, I do have a couple of things. As you guys know, we opened up the splash pad. Unfortunately, the hand sanitizer station there did not last very long. So I just ask people to be respectful of the property there. Complex is also open as of yesterday. Numbers are coming in. People were very, very happy to come back, so it was kind of a good day for a lot of people. Twenty two hundred West, construction is almost complete. We just need to stripe that road. If you want to go down that road, it's quite nice. They did the overlay there. And a lot of new water lines and different things, so that's almost completed. As far as municipal park, the fitness stations are in and ready to go. There still is a fence around there. That's a contracted agency. around there. That's a contracted agency that we had that fence, so we didn't have any accidents. They've been contacted and should be removing that fence shortly, so that will be opening up hopefully by the end of this week. Camille mentioned this in the budget. We, as as part of the city council meeting a couple of times ago, cup, couple of council meetings ago, we put some fixed assets up for sale. We received over a hundred thousand dollars, so that's really good. Those assets, we didn't think would fetch that much money, but things were selling pretty well. There's this Thursday night, there's a a small leak in front of the fire station on nineteen hundred west. We'll be fixing that late Thursday night, so be prepared for that. Mayor kinda, he started talking a little bit about the CARES Act funding, we're sifting through that. A little over three million dollars might be coming our way for local businesses. We don't have a whole lot of detail anticipating already amending our budget that we just did the first meeting in July, most likely, if we get the proper information to do so. So they they act like things, the first one point two million dollars needs to be going, needs to be spent by the end of July, so there is a quick turnaround for that. But hopefully more information will come shortly this Thursday, have a meeting over that as well. And then this is also the last council meeting for this budget year. It's been a little different for city employees, to say the least. It's been kind of unique, but I have to give a shout out to the city employees. Public safety, public works, everybody has been working together. I think that's where we do well, is that we're all a big, big family here, so as this comes to an end, a new budget year will start. Hopefully, the next budget year won't be as unique as this one, so. But thank you to all the city employees for all that they do.
Great comments, great comments, Matt. Thank you. Okay, counsel, anything you'd like to share? Any thoughts?
Mayor, I just think in the current atmosphere, I think it's important for our our public safety to recognize that we certainly support them and and we certainly want to throw our confidence behind them, because that hasn't been in every other city, so I want to make sure that they hear it from us.
Are you suggesting other cities are talking about defunding?
Yeah, that's exactly where I was going, but.
Great comment, Jen, great comment.
We know all the comments, you know, about the police in the chokehold and the knee on the neck and I guess, I'm just curious what our policies are on that. I guess that's something I could talk to Carl privately about.
I I will indicate to you, Matt, and I've had that conversation and he's already been talking to Carl. I'll let them speak for themselves on that.
I can, I can address it if you want. That's that's humor.
Please.
First off, calling it a chokehold is a misname and a misdescription of what it is. Okay, what it it does, if it's trained right and used right, is it applies pressure to the sides of the neck and it restricts blood flow to the brain. You can apply that for roughly ten seconds, cut off the blood flow. The individual passes out. It allows you to gain control of them, put them into handcuffs and without hurting them. I can tell you that any number of times that that has been a lifesaver. When you get in a fight and you can't control an individual because of drugs or if they have a mental illness and they're not responding to anything else, everybody responds to that hold.
Yeah.
I guarantee you it saves lives when applied, when applied properly. We have not seen an instance throughout the nation where it has become an issue where it was applied correctly. It wasn't even attempted to be applied correctly. They were applying something completely different. Okay, they they used an arm bar, which does block off air. That's that's inappropriate. We don't teach it. The knee on the neck, I've been on posts since that happened. I have not heard one police officer nationwide say that they have ever seen that taught. That was nothing but a punishing improper use. All that said, the mayor has already, or not the mayor, excuse me, the governor has already put put out an executive order banning us from using any kind of a neck hold. And the legislature is taking action right now in their special session to eliminate the possibility of us using that. I understand that in today's current environment, but I will tell you that the lack of that will result in additional people being killed. When you are at the end of a fight and you're fighting for your life and you cannot use a weapon which will incapacitate without doing any harm, when applied properly, it does no harm. When we train it, we choke each other out, for lack of a better term, we cut the blood supply off until we feel the effects of it. That's the only way you can teach somebody how long to hold it. It has no residual effect. It cannot have a residual effect when done properly. Unfortunately, it will go away and when you are in a fight to the death, if we don't use that technique, we have to resort to weapons.
Great comments, Carl.
I'm very supportive of our Roy City police. I love all you guys and I can't imagine not having you around. And so I appreciate everything you do for our city.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That, as far as I'm concerned, our public safety people have our backs as well as all of our employees, but definitely in the time of dismay throughout the country, we need to stand behind and stand up for our public safety people.
Great comments.
That was where I was going with my comment.
Okay, we appreciate that. Okay, anything else, counsel, you want to share? I just got one thing I want to share. Okay, I just want to let you indicate to you that over the last few city council meetings, there has now been two resolutions that have been that have been tabled. We still at some point need to come back to the brick, Jake discussion. It's out there. We tabled it. Waiting for more information. I'll work with Matt. We'll need to work that and then Chief Golden will work the the interlocal agreement with Hiller Force Base and bring that back to the council for for your decision. So those are the two that I'm aware that still need to be addressed and we'll we'll work towards that. Anything else the council wants to share before we go into an RDA board meeting?
Mayor, if I may, we put on the on the underneath the city managers and council report a business advisory to speak about the banners.
Okay, do you want to talk about that?
I can talk about that. I don't want to, Brian, if you want to talk about that, you're welcome to as well. I don't want to steal your thunder or anything.
No, I go ahead and now if if I can fill in some blanks.
Okay. Perfect. It was suggested from the business advisory board that we purchase some buy low or shop local banners. As you know, our streetlights out here on nineteen hundred west has some banners on it. There are roughly a hundred and twenty poles out there and we would place these banners every three to five poles. We have four different types of banners, the winter banner, live, work, play banner. That's typically our spring banner, our Roy Days banner that we're not going to be putting up for obvious reasons this year, and then our fall banner. Where we thought, discussing this with councilmember Saxton, is that this could possibly go into the live, work, play banner. They're all different type of colors. Obviously, winter's going to be a different color coordination than the fall, but it kind of fits well with that live, work, play. We've been holding off on putting those up to see the outcome to this. We would be, like I said, we'd place those banners every three to five, so we would need, if we did three, we'd need need about forty banners to down to twenty four banners if we did it every five. The cost would be roughly anywhere from fifteen hundred dollars to twenty four hundred dollars. Being a an advisory board to the the city council, we wanted to have this discussion with the body to see if we wanted to move forward with purchasing these banners. From an administration standpoint, I would say that with the current state of the economy with next year's budget, it would be far better if we hurry and purchase these through this year's budget. We made quite, quite a bit of cuts for next year and we do have some funding in the legislative department through the beautification budget this year if you guys choose to do so. So we would just need that direction and a hurry through that process of purchasing it.
Counsel, comments on that?
Does that need to be a motion or is that just a recommendation?
Just a recommendation, just to to let us know, yeah.
How do you feel?
I would, I would certainly support whatever our our business advisory committee, if we have the the funding to do so.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, we never know what's going to happen next year, so.
Well, as you well know, a lot of our businesses are struggling a little bit right now and so anything we can bring awareness to buy local is a great thing and I think it would help. And surely that's the business advisory board's position. We think we can do some things to stimulate the the locals to look at shopping local, so.
I
Other comments?
Yeah, just
What's the cost?
It'd be, it'd be great to get from the council what and they are on this particular recommendation. Are we closer to the one every five? Are we closer to one every four?
Remind me again, the difference in cost of those two?
Anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty four hundred.
So it's a ninety dollar difference?
Yeah.
Ninety hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That was the last time, that those costs are estimated off the last time we purchased some, which was about three years ago. I don't anticipate it going up a horrible amount, though.
They they'd be vinyl, double.
Yes, they're all vinyl.
I I don't see that that's a a really significant difference, but.
I think for the service that it provides, I mean, I'm a pretty conservative gal, but no, we went ahead and opened up the complex at quite a cost, which serves really a few people and these banners, I think, are a great service for businesses and serving.
They would address everyone.
So I think I'd go for the every third pole, get that out there. Let's get this rolling. I thought that the article in the Roy Connection was great and let's just move forward and push it the best that we can.
Anne, you have a comment?
I agree with that. I think we need to get, I mean, thank heavens for grocery stores and the burger bar. That's all I have to say.
Joe Paul, do you have a comment? Okay, I'm sensing that you got the majority, if not the entire group, supporting the move. I say go to forty. And let's see if we can get those purchased under this fiscal year and expended on this fiscal year and to get them placed sometime in July or whenever we can get them and let's see if we can get the people thinking about buy local.
Okay, we'll do it.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, do I have a motion then to adjourn and go into an RDA board meeting?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Anne. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Don't hear any? Thank you. We'll just take a couple of seconds and shift over to the RDA board. I believe, Morgan, that's a separate. I believe that's a sec- separate teleconference. Is that correct?
Yes, you'll have to exit out of this one and then the second one should be in your email or on your calendar.
Perfect, thank you. See you in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thanks.